We are at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. We would like to acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the land of the Middoawakaton, Dakota People. Middoawakaton means dwellers of the Spirit Lake. The first item on our agenda is 1.0 roll call. Dana?
Ryan Clark.
Here.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here.
Eric Desmer is currently absent. Melinda Dolez.
Here.
Simi Petnek.
Here.
Katie Schwartz.
Here. 2.0 is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. 3.0 is the approval of our agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Second. Motion by Sharon, seconded by Simi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4.0 is our workshop items. We do have one this evening, and it is 4.1 Kids Club and Avid and So wash Co. Cares Partnership, and that will be introduced by Jake Winchell, Director of Community Education.
Thank you Chair Schwartz. Good evening Board. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce to you a handful of individuals who have really formed a really neat partnership that spans across numerous So wash Co. Programs in the district and a handful of schools as well. They all share the same goal. Their motto is "Our Community Helping Our Community." As you can see here, we have a handful of individuals here in some of the crowd for moral support as well and here to answer some questions. So with that being said, I will introduce the staff members here that are with us today. Maybe the students can take a second to introduce themselves as well. But we have Heidi Wright, one of our Kids Club supervisors, Cheryl Jogger with Community Education and So wash Co. Cares Foundation, Amy Saldana with Kids Club. She's in one of our OSTs, and Julie Anken with Avid. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Jake. Good evening. I'm Cheryl Jogger. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for the school district. I'm also the founder of So wash Co. Cares, which is a community-led nonprofit that supports our schools. The slogan for So wash Co. Cares, as Jake mentioned, is "Our Community Helping Our Community." We have some very special guests with us tonight to tell you more about how they're doing exactly that. And so this year, our school district applied for and was awarded an Innovation and Service Learning Grant through the Minnesota Department of Education for nearly $25,000. With the support of this grant, our Woodbury High School Avid seniors have been working with our Kids Club students at Pine Hill, Bailey, and Woodbury Elementary Schools. The funding provided by this grant has allowed our students to select, purchase, and donate items to the So wash Co. Cares Winter Clothing Program, which has helped over 450 of our students. And you may have seen the video that the students created for their fundraising campaign, which raised over $5,000 for snacks. And then going into third trimester, we'll be working on a school supply program. And so this is not just a collaboration between Avid and Kids Club and Cares. There are other partners who have been important to this work, including our Nutrition Services Department, Communications, TLS, and Finance. And so it really is "Our Community Helping Our Community." So with no further ado, I will pass the mic on to Amy Saldana from Kids Club and Julie Anken with Woodbury High School Avid to tell you more about the nuts and bolts of the program and how our students are helping our students.
Hi, I'm Amy Saldana, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about the back history of how this came into play. When we came out of COVID, a lot of things changed. And I, my two older students were in Avid. And part of Avid, you need to do some service learning. There were no longer opportunities for these students because you needed to be 18 or you needed to be with a parent. Well, I'm a single mom and I work full-time, so that opportunity was not a possibility. I happened to be doing professional development and sitting next to Julie Anken, and I said, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And so that was the birth of the first part of this. And we started with 35 students, and they came in and did some service learning with Kids Club. That's kind of how it started. The next year, we continued on and we did 100 more students. And then that winter, as I was paging through my emails, I saw a grant come in from MDE, and I'm like, "They've never offered this before." MDE partnering in community ed and the schools and a nonprofit. And I immediately thought, "Well, I have them all right here. So what do you guys think?" And at that point, we didn't really know what we were getting into. So that's how it all started, and it's gone in great directions. A lot of people working together, and the more people that are working together, the more ideas we have. And I've had the opportunity to work with these three plus many more for a couple of years now, and it's been great. So my slides tell more than that, but that's the back history to kind of how it all got started.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Anken. I'm the Avid 11 and 12 teacher, as well as Avid Coordinator at Woodbury High School. And I am so proud to be here tonight. And in a couple of minutes, you're going to be able to hear from the real stars of the show. But Avid at its core is more than just a place to learn academics and college and career readiness, but we really focus on that social-emotional connections and giving back to others. And so when Amy and I connected and making this partnership with Kids Club, I immediately knew, I'm like, "I've got these amazing high school students to be mentors." And it's really important for us that representation matters and that bringing, having a lot of these kids go into Kids Club, several of them have, they went to Kids Club themselves, and they get to see former staff members. They're in the crowd. So it's just really been a fantastic partnership. So again, I'm not going to spend too much more time talking because these really are the stars of the show, and they're going to kind of share with you their impact that being a part of this collaboration has had on them. So I'm going to start with Gabby Herr.
Hi, guys. I'm Gabby. So personally, for this opportu-- or sorry, this opportunity personally for me has been really beneficial because I want to go into education myself. So it was a really big learning curve. It really helped me kind of learn how to handle kids without like being mean to them. I'm the oldest, so you know, having more patience with kids is something that I needed to learn. You know, normally with my siblings, I'd just like shut myself in my room and tell them to go away, but you can't really do that when you're working with them on this scale. I also learned a lot about So wash Co. Cares. I've kind of always lived like a very privileged life. You know, we live in the suburbs. This is not something that I was really familiar with when I was younger because it wasn't something that applied to me. But working with So wash Co. Cares along with Kids Club helped me learn a lot more about donating and community service and all types of different services that you can do to give back because this really helped me see-- sorry, this is not really making sense. This helped me see like the faces that I'm really giving back to because before it was kind of just like, "Oh, you know, like I did my good deed for the day." But this helps me feel like a lot better about the things that I've been doing to give back.
Yep. So that was Gabby. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say I'm really grateful and appreciate the opportunity for you guys to listen and hear us out a little bit. So my name is Tenzin, just as Gabby. I'm a Woodbury High School senior as well. And for me specifically, I'm going to be talking about how I feel like I've made an impact on one of the kids specifically, talking about Pine Hill, Pine Hill Elementary School. So there was this girl named Emma, I believe?
Emma.
Emma, yes. And she's in a wheelchair. And she wanted to play football with me and some of the boys, but the boys weren't too fond of having her because they felt that she wouldn't be able to help the team or she wouldn't be able to get us points or get the win. So I wanted to kind of let her know that like she can do anything that she wants to do. And just because other people say like she can't do this or like she's not capable of getting points, I kind of wanted to show her that she is capable. She can do anything that she wants to do. So.
(applause)
So obviously, I invited her to my team, and if you guys know football, I was the QB. And I was passing her the ball a lot. And not surprisingly, she scored a lot. She scored a lot of touchdowns. And at the end, she told me how grateful she was and how much she appreciated it. And I think I made an impact on her specifically because I just wanted to let her know that whatever she puts her mind to do or whatever she wants to do, that she's capable of doing it. And also how Kids Club can show us like how going or doing small things is important as well. Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Those are some great responses from Gabby and Tenzin. I feel like I have to like step it up a little bit now. But thank you. My name is Stephanie Abroqua. I'm also a fellow Woodbury High School student alongside Gabby and Tenzin. I just wanted to talk about how like Kids Club has made an, Kids Club and So wash Co. Cares has really made an impact on me and like my view of the district and just like how important these kids are to me and how important we as high school students are to them. So going into this, I really didn't have any idea of what So wash Co. Cares was. Like obviously, I've seen the logo on posters around school and I've heard of it, but like obviously, like Gabby said, I've been very privileged in my life and I haven't had to rely on other resources like that before. But then when she came in and she spoke about So wash Co. Cares and she also like aligned that with Kids Club and how we can help as high school students and just show these kids that we have an impact and what we're doing really matters, I really just took it to heart because it's like, "Oh, like you're going to volunteer at this elementary school, kids. You're just going to hang out with them for a little bit." But it stepped it up to like, "What are we doing to specifically help them?" Which I really appreciated. Like through the lessons, like the winter lessons and like the healthy food and eating with nutritional services. I really liked that. And I really enjoyed like just hanging out with the kids. Like sometimes you think like they don't remember us or like it's just like a one and done, but they really do. Me and my friends often go to Pine Hill, so we recognize Mia and Eloise and Ms. Heidi. So like Eloise, sorry, and Ms. Heidi. We recognize everyone here. And I really like that because like the kids recognize us too. They remember us. They talk to us. Like even when we have like the more boring lessons, they still come up to us after and talk to us, make conversation, just check in. And I really appreciate that as well.
We have our littlest ones now.
Hi, my name is Eloise. I'm in third grade at Pine Hill Elementary School. Avid comes to my school once a week. My favorite thing about Avid is trying new foods. I learned so much from the students about community service and raise money for our community. My favorite thing I learned was trying new foods is good.
Hi, my name's Mia, and I am a third grader at Pine Hill Elementary School. Avid students have been coming to my school since last year. My favorite thing about Avid is they teach us amazing stuff. This year, we learned all about winter clothing and healthy snacks. We got to do many lessons about each theme. My favorite thing I learned was we tried different types of food.
How amazing.
(applause)
How amazing are these kids and those stories? And you know, that Emma in the wheelchair, she's going to remember that forever. You have made a significant impact in all of these kids' lives. And so we're grateful to be here to share these stories and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just have one question. First of all, thank you so much for doing this and all you students for being involved in this. I mean, what a remarkable and impactful program. But I have a question if there's any thoughts or plans of expanding this to East Ridge and Park High School.
All right. I am not sure. We for sure are going to be continuing with our partnership. That is to be discussed yet this spring and what the capabilities are at each of those high schools. But for sure, we're going to continue with our Avid 11 and 12. And the reason why I do 11 and 12 is because students are expected to get their own transportation to the sites. And so many of my students drive or they carpool together, or there's amazing parents that are really dedicated to make sure that their student gets to the volunteer site on time. So I cannot speak to the other high schools, but definitely Woodbury High School will be continuing this. So I just want to add, our So wash Co. community is strong. Like for me as a staff member here, it has been so fun connecting with all the like Nutrition Services, TLS this summer, and Communications. All the support that we have been given is really amazing, and it's been such a great part, program to be part of. So.
I had a couple of questions. So Amy, can you tell me, you said that you had sort of started this program and then you received a grant. So what was the, what was the main sort of shift you were able to make as a result of receiving the grant as opposed to what you were doing before?
That's a great question. Julie and I recognized that we needed some more structure in the program as well, with the thoughts that if it were to ever get bigger, that there definitely needed to be some more structure in place. So we were working on building that structure for the following year, and this kind of just fell into our laps. So that was nice. Before I hand off the microphone though, I want to make sure that we know that Molly was part of our team. She's out tonight. And then Terri Fiesel is in the audience with us. She's Woodbury. Heidi Wright, we met from Pine Hill. And then Heidi Kadelbert from Bailey. She's not able to be here tonight.
Maybe to add to your question, when this grant came through, Amy, like she said, there really hasn't been this, the impetus had to, you had to have a community partnership. And so this was money that we already were, were all connected and that the state was giving a grant that we already were doing. So it was a great opportunity for us to have additional funds to be able to donate, but use it through learning, service learning projects. And the kids really were all involved in that, each of the first two trimesters of selecting the boots and the gloves and packaging them. And then our second trimester and the healthy snacks and trying foods and all of that. So I think just that opportunity was there, and we already kind of had it in place, and it just kind of fell in line.
Is this grant a renewable grant? Or is this, is the program kind of able to be sustained if the grant does not, if we don't get another grant from the state?
We don't think that the grant is sustainable.
Okay.
We don't think it'll be offered again, but we have enough of the pieces in place. Thank you Google Drive, where we can replicate and build.
Okay. Well, that's great. And then for you three, so you're all seniors this year, correct?
Yeah.
And how much time are you spending, like do you spend in any given week or any given month or whatever period of time working with this program?
So we're all, every single student in the Avid 11 and 12 program is required one volunteer shift per trimester. So we kind of spread out, eat all of our students into a couple of groups so that we can have enough kids at each place for each lesson. And we have like stations. And then we also spend time in class going over the lessons. So the in-class time is maybe one or two lessons a week that we're going through, and everyone's going through the lessons even if they're not showing up onsite. And then when we're onsite, those would be the only like out of school hours that we do. And it's like maybe like one, two hours with the kids, teaching them about things, spending time with them.
And then Gabby, I feel sort of compelled to say that South Washington County Schools is always looking for educational staff. And so.
I've always planned on coming back here.
If you are, you know, if you go off and you decide you want to become a teacher like five years from now?
I, I'm actually, yeah, I'm going to the U for education. So yeah, I will be coming back. Yeah.
And she's, one more thing to add on. She's also applied for a summer job with Kids Club. And so that's been another really employment pool is that this connection. So Carol Tobin has reached out so I can promote to the current seniors when they graduate for a great summer job. So it really is, yes, future employer employment here at So wash Co. So it's a win-win. Hopefully keeping our Avid program strong because the Kids Club kids really look up to these guys as celebrities. So I'm hoping that they're like, "I want to be in Avid too." So.
How many, how many students are in 11th and 12th grade Avid?
So I have 60 seniors at Woodbury High School, and I, six zero, and I have 57 juniors.
And so, and there are all of them?
So for this grant, it's just the 60 seniors that are doing it. But the juniors are also that they are required to go one time to one of the three sites over each trimester. So that's not as structured. Like they are there making connections, but playing with the kids, reading, doing those kinds of activities. Whereas this year, the seniors were really more in charge of running the lessons. And each, we had four stations, and so it really has worked out well. So it's about 10 to 12 minutes per station. So the kids are rotating, so they get to experience all of that. So, yeah.
And then since we know what Gabby's doing next year, if you two are seniors, what are your plans for after June 9th or 10th or whatever?
So I plan on going to a community college for financial reasons, and then hopefully going to a university in-state or possibly out-of-state depending on how I'm feeling. And I've majored in biology in hopes of going, going through the pre-med track and hopefully becoming a dermatologist, which has been my long-term dream goal.
I'm kind of very similar to Tenzin. I don't exactly know where I'm going yet. I know I should probably have an idea, but I don't know yet.
You guys are young.
Yeah, I have been accepted to numerous places, but I just haven't had like that place yet. But I do plan on attending a four-year college, majoring in pre-med or like pre-med focus, and then either psychology or biology. And then just like Tenzin, I want to go into dermatology. So, yeah.
Right? Just, yes, just remember us in our acne when you guys are rich and famous.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all. Okay, on to 5.0, and that is our information items. We do have three this evening. The first one is 5.1, and that is a lease levy update, and that will be introduced by Tyrone Brookins, Assistant Superintendent.
All right. Thank you for that. But before I get into that introduction, Abby, meet Gabby, and maybe a pocket contract now, we can lock her in. Just saying, just saying. Grow your own, grow your own. This evening, you will receive an update on lease levy related to our Next Step Pathways Program and the progress related to the renovations that are taking place there. This update will connect to the strategic priorities of student experience, student pathways, and supports, operations, planning, and finance, and engagement, and partnerships. Mark Dubois from Como Architects will conduct the presentation. We also have Nikki Lock, Nicole Lock, who is the principal or lead for our Next Step Pathways program. And she will be on-site answering the questions. As you see on the screen, the title reads Transition Program Building. The official name for the program is Next Step Transition. And given that the program is And given that the program is actualized at two sites, Pathways and Next Step, our Communications Department will lead a project for the name for the new consolidated site that will include the interested parties and the construction advisory team. At this time, I yield to Mark for the presentation.
Good evening again.
Nope.
Better? Okay. And so, as Tyrone said, I'm excited to come and to share the progress of the design of this unique project. It's a new home, really, the way I think we've been thinking of it, that Nikki and her team have been working with us for the last several months. And it's just an exciting project to see a new home developed for these two groups merging together into one place. One of the first things we did was to develop a vision. As the two programs are coming together under one roof, we felt this would be appropriate timing to try to set a vision for the space. The programs have a vision, but we want the space that's being created to match that. So I wanted to just sort of read through this. You can read it, obviously. But I think, again, the goal was to be able to translate these vision points into the built space. And so hopefully, that will begin to come through in the images and the, and the design that you see. But the first thing that became very important was this nurturing learning environment where the students themselves are maintaining and sharing the space with the community. So this really is a place where the students will own this for themselves, take care of it, and also share it with community members. And we'll, we'll look at some of the spaces that will allow for that. Collaborative and flexible spaces. So that's both in the, the built portion of it, but also even things like furnishings, being flexible, and being allowed to move throughout spaces to create different types of learning opportunities. The space to support the entire spectrum of the student skills, bright, open, and welcoming spaces. So natural light and a connection to the outdoors. And we'll see where we're able to achieve some of that. And the last point being this, having these common areas that are accessible, and they will actually showcase the work and the study that is happening within them. So that became our guiding principle, these vision statements. And we'll take a look at how they translated into the space. Just a brief highlight of what we were trying to achieve with the scope of the project. So we'll look at the existing building that the district has now purchased. So the, the goal is to renovate that, and then also add on to accommodate the growing population of about, up to about 120 students was the target that we were aiming for. Also, to develop some outdoor spaces that would be extensions of the interior learning spaces. And then, again, to foster that collaborative work and a connection to the community. So if you're familiar with it, I won't bore you with the details, but earlier, or back in 2024, the, the district purchased this existing property and building on the corner of 70th and Jamaica in Cottage Grove. It's an existing church that was selling their facility. These are some of the images of the existing conditions. It was a building that was initially built in 1983, and then there was an addition put on in the year 2000. Some of the interior spaces that our task will be to transform these into the learning, some of the learning environments. So one of the things that we looked at, of course, was the entire site. And so this is a graphic representation of a conceptual site plan. You can see the parking lot in the south and west. The existing building is in the maroon. And then the proposed addition is to the east. To the northeast is where we plan to have the outdoor activity area, both a paved sport court, but also an, about a 10,000 square foot grass play area for different activities. You'll also notice on the southeast corner of the addition is what we're calling the outdoor learning patio. And so that's, as we get to the floor plan, you'll be able to see how that connects to the interior spaces to the north of it. Another, I remember when we first went out to the site, one of the exciting portions was in the southwest corner of the site, there's a vegetable garden. And I can remember Nikki's eyes kind of lighting up, that we have a horticulture program and lab, and now we have an outdoor garden. So that, again, the connection is great. As far as the building goes, this is, again, a diagrammatic overview of the, of the building. On the west side is the existing building, and then on the east side is the new addition. So it's roughly split half and half down the middle. The, the main entry, which will be a secure entry, is roughly, in essence, where the existing entry to the church building is. So just kind of on the south side, towards the southwest. Connected to that will be sort of the administrative area, and again, all in a secure portion of the building. To the, to the west is the existing sanctuary. And that is, as if you saw in the existing photographs, is a high-ceilinged space, vaulted space. And that became the natural landing spot for what we're calling a multipurpose room. And that will serve breakfast, that will serve lunch, that will serve as a large motor skills area with everything from space for trikes, to pickleball, to basketball, all kinds of large motor skill activity. And also, that is the place where we're envisioning the connection, the main connection to the community. So the idea of sort of a pop-up marketplace within that space, there's a direct connection from the main entry vestibule into that. So we envision that that can be a place where the community can come, see some of the work that has been done by the students, and also potentially purchase some of the things that they are making for sale. So that's one of the, the big connections with the community. There will also be a kitchen and a servery for the, for the dining portion. The east portion of the building is where the educational teaching stations will live. And on the north, in the center, is where the discovery lab will be located. There is an existing discovery lab, of course, and that is going to be moved into this location. There are six, I'll say standard classrooms, but six classrooms with flexible furniture, and teaching station, and IT, and smart panels, and the like, to serve anywhere from six to eight to 10 to 12 students, depending on, on the need. And then the east side of the building is what we are envisioning as the laboratory, or the lab spaces. So on the, the north side, the northeast corner, is a combined culinary lab and independent living learning space. So learning, obviously, cooking, but well beyond that into just all the things that it takes to live independently. So it'll be set up almost like an apartment of sorts. South of that is what we're calling the informal learning. And that is kind of at the node, or the end of the main east-west hallway. And that, again, has large glass and views out to the east, but it also has technology where a teacher and students and staff can come together sort of informally in an ad hoc version and fashion, and just have some sort of learning right there. On the south side of that portion of the addition is where we have the work-based learning lab, and then a hortica, excuse me, horticulture makerspace lab. And again, that's on the south and east corners, that has the access to that outdoor learning patio on the south. So what will it look like? These are some renderings that we've put together for the exterior, and we'll look at some of the interior as well. So again, here's the main entry, kind of in the center of the image. The existing sanctuary is on the left. And then the existing classroom building is on the right. Another view looking towards the east, which shows the expansion of the building towards the east, and the, the lab spaces under that other cross gable. This is an image of the southeast corner of the building with, again, the large windows. That's the horticulture makerspace lab. So it, again, horticulture happens, and then there's also building of projects. And in fact, one of the thoughts is that those planting beds that you see on the south side of the outdoor learning patio could actually be collaboratively put together by the students themselves, and then the plants within them cared for. So there's sort of this indoor-outdoor learning experience. This is another view looking from the parking lot up to that lab area. And we've talked about potential, again, of some outdoor gardens, flowers, things that students could take care of. Again, with that, back to that vision of having a place that the students themselves are taking care of. This is, this is a home, in a sense, where people will take ownership of. And then another view of that outdoor patio. Moving to the inside, this would be the inside looking out of that horticulture makerspace. So again, with the high vaulted ceilings, the large windows to connect inside to outside, flexible furniture. This is the informal learning area that I mentioned before. It's at the end of that east-west hallway, again, with large glass. And then to the left is where the connection to the culinary lab and the independent learning would be. This is an interior rendering of the existing sanctuary. So again, we're putting a large window on the south side to open that up. And because it's that large vaulted space, we can have activities, large motor activities. Also, on the left side, you see some tables set up there. Again, that can be part of where that pop-up marketplace starts to, starts to form when, when appropriate. So schedule-wise, just to give you a picture, we have been under design with Nikki and her team since the fall. And by the end of April, early May, we'll be putting the construction drawings out to bid, bidding during May. And then the plan would be to start construction in the fall of 2025 to be complete, so that by the fall of 2026, Nikki and her team have this new home to move into. That's, that's what I have to share. If there are any questions for me or for Nikki, feel free.
This looks amazing. So Nikki, one question, so how many kids are in the Next Step and Pathways program now?
I think we opened at about 92 this year. And I think right now, with graduates over the course of the year, transition now, we have students who age out throughout the year. I think we're at 80, 82 right now.
Okay. So when kids hit 22, they are done, even if it's not, like, they don't get to go to the end of the school year?
No. So it's, they have eligibility until all the way through their 21st birthday.
Okay.
So the day before they turn 22 is their graduation day, if they take full, if they take advantage of their entire eligibility. We have many students who don't. And they meet their goals and objectives, and they, and services, and they're on their way.
Okay. And so you had mentioned Student Voice was involved in the creation of this space. So what were the things that kids were asking for, or telling you that they needed in this space? And I guess it's for either one of you.
Yeah, well, we frequently hear about the fact that we don't have enough windows. So that's one thing that's definitely showing up. I think, Simi, I would say it's in the things our students gravitate towards. So they have a lot of strong voice in our clubs and, and the activities you do at the end of the day. So those things influenced the, the property and what we were thinking about for our outdoor space and areas. We see the enthusiasm around the horticulture opportunities that we offer students. We see how popular our cooking classes are, and how engaging those are for students. So both in question, what are you looking for, for your school, and then also that, just that daily experience of what our students are gravitating towards is, really has informed who, what we're building for this community of students.
Okay. And then as, well, you know, I, if you've gone to the Next Step graduation, it's the best graduation. It's so great.
Agreed.
And so, if you, do you envision moving events like the graduation into this space? Or will you keep having them at Park and other areas around the district?
We would love to host our graduates and our families and their friends in our new school. And if weather allows, it would be fabulous to use our multipurpose space for our graduation, and then spill out onto our learning patio for cake and refreshments.
And so that would be kind of the vision for, like, to, to host those kinds of events?
There, yes. Yeah.
In this space?
Absolutely.
And then, I guess, I don't know whether this is for you, maybe, or Tyrone? I don't know who knows the answer to this. So when we, so we're, we would be moving into this space for the 26, 27 school year, correct? And so what happens to our current obligations at Valley Creek Mall and in Cottage Grove?
Well, I can speak to that. The Valley Creek Mall expires then, so that'll align very nicely with this. The Cottage Grove space, we do have through 27. So we'll have some, taking a look at whether there's opportunity to release us from that lease, or otherwise, otherwise utilize that space, just to make sure that we are not just having that be dormant either.
Okay.
Hi, hi Nikki. So having a child that graduated from the Next Step program, I'm a huge component of this, and I'm so excited. I'm a big advocate for the program, but it just looks beautiful. Wondering, what's the max amount of students that you'll be able to have there? Did you mention that?
Yeah, so we're building it for 120.
120, okay.
And always remember, our community is our classroom. So we're, students are coming and going all day long. So we're going to have a beautiful home for them. But we're going to continue that, that focus and that call to make sure that our students are doing a lot of learning in the community.
So will more students be offered the program than currently are, since there's going to be the space, or?
Well, I'd like to think that the students who, whose IEP teams recognize them to be eligible for, and need transition programming are coming. My hope is now they're coming. So I just, with the growth of our district, and when we recognize just how our program has just grown through the years, that 120 just is sort of that trend that we're anticipating in the coming five to 10 years.
That's great. And I know, like, right now, there's Next Step and Pathways. Is there any talk of coming with combined? I know you said something about project scope. Is that going to be what you're going to be calling it, or?
I, the name is still in process. And so we'll be, that will be a collaboration as well. So we'll be, it'll be one program. So Next Step and Pathways will, will come together. My, so right now, we have one program, two communities, probably three unique learning communities within those two. Our Next Step learning community, our Pathways learning community, and our Discovery learning community. So in this program, we'll continue with that learning community model. I actually think when we come up with the name, we'll be talking about what those learning communities will be called as well. It's still an opportunity for us to have differentiated programming. And again, one of the most beautiful things about special education is it's such an individualized plan. So, so we have one program, we have four unique learning communities. And then within that, we have up to 120 unique learning plans for our unique learners.
And with the new location, do we? And with the new location, do we anticipate having more connections with more job sites or anything that are more centrally located?
Yeah, that's a great question. Again, we have this great opportunity to work with employers in Woodbury and Cottage Grove and, and we are really, really well positioned for this growth. We have four work coordinators, five incredible job coaches. So, so we have amazing partners now. We're set up to continue to sustain those partnerships and then also to grow. So we're really well positioned for this new location and more and more substantial relationships with employers, all for the betterment of our students and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one question. Also having a child that graduated, I really wish this would have been built for him because he did not like going to. My son was, nothing against Woodbury, but my son did not like having to go to school in Woodbury since we live over here. So this would have been great for him. I do have a question about, I know right now lunch is being brought in. Now I noticed a kitchen. Will you have nutrition service staff there or is that not the purpose of this kitchen?
Yeah, that's a great question, Katie. The plan right now is for us to continue to partner with the kitchens around us and have lunch brought. However, that, the space that's being built there, we'll, we'll have more students to serve and just will be much more efficient in terms of where the warming carts are. And I'm also really proud that we're envisioning a, a space, a lunch experience for our students that's going to increase independence. Our students will be able to move around, access things in a more reasonable and easier way. And so our students will be more independent in that lunchtime experience.
And have more of like a lunchroom setting than kind of the?
Right now, our space means our, our staff is just a little more involved in, in their lunch than they necessarily need to be. And it all comes from care and concern. It's just, and accessibility. So this space will just allow for, again, it's all about independence. So just allow for, allow for that to happen more, more easily.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. On to five point two, and that is our revised budget. And that will be presented by Chris Blackburn, Director of Business Services.
I'm gonna go get a clicker. I get to dance today apparently. Better look out, I might just keep standing here while I go through this, so. Oh no, I was going the right direction. One more slide. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. It's always exciting. I know I've been a part of that project just a little bit on the financing side and so it's so fun to see those highlights. I feel like we have a big crowd here and I'm certain that they're here for revised budget and not for these other exciting performances. So always fun to hear what our students are up to as well. So tonight then, financial update is again, the revised budget. So each year we bring a revised budget typically in March to the board for approval. Significance of the revised budget then is school districts revise budgets to reflect currently available data. So I'll just remind everyone that we set the budget in June of last year. And so the original budget is set long before we have some really known quantities. So we revised to include updated student counts. We have more finalized state allocation numbers, federal allocations if there's been any changes. Sometimes we have to set the budget prior to knowing those specifically. Labor agreements, if there's been any finalized settlements or even just as a year or two of additional contracts go into place that we can maybe have a little more known quantity on that, as well as any new agreements or leases, whether it's software purchases, technology purchases, maybe we buy a church, we can put those things into the budget. So the budget is based on the best information we have today. So we always try to remind everybody that it can change. Again, we do as very best a job as we can as of today, but I will tell you that sometimes tomorrow changes. I remember setting a budget, we were all excited about the snow plowing and we got a snowstorm at the end of April. So we just are always, we know that it's going to be not correct. It's, the actual will vary from these numbers, but we try to have as very best as we can today. It reflect, gives us an indication of the reserves remaining at the end of the year. So as we start planning, and again, aids us in preparing the budget for next year, that we know kind of where we think we're going to land. And again, that assists us in those long-term projections. Man, I have too many hands, too many clickers, too many hands. Not enough hands? On this page, slide then is just the revised budget summary. So it's that high-level overview of our, kind of by categorical revenue in those large buckets and then expenditures by category of spending. And so I'll point out that the twenty-four, twenty-five then, what I'm really pleased about is to come, I know when we originally passed the budget, we had a $5 million deficit. And right now, based on what we know today, we're anticipating about a $1 million positive instead. So that's a lovely shift. I will highlight some categories on kind of why that came as a result and point out on some of the shifts. Cause I know there's some numbers that are like, whoa, $200,000 increase. And we'll talk about what happened there. And I'll give you a minus nineteen percent might have to do with it. So, but again, $340 million in revenue, $339, little more than in expenditures for that net million dollar at the end for revised budget. About a four percent increase in revenues, a two percent increase in expenditures. So the exciting parts. Another slide, just, I know that at some point you'll probably just be tired of any of your business managers, finance directors talking about enrollment, but it does drive the budget. So we always try to keep the board apprised of that. So on this slide, it really does the historical versus projected. So in that kind of maroon, red color is our historical enrollments. And you can see again, it's been real, I would say just steady, right? Real stable. The blue then is our projected for this year. And so I'll point out that last year we ended at eighteen-nine-eighty-four. The original budget this year was eighteen-seven-eight, nineteen-seven-eighteen, eighteen-seven-eighteen and we are currently projecting nineteen-one-thirty-three. The gray is just to highlight again that as we look forward, again, we're going to continue to see that stable right now. But the one caution on this slide is that this does not reflect the impact of the proposed expansion of Math and Science Academy. So we do anticipate that and I'd just like to remind the board of that because that will be very impactful in the coming years. On this slide then, not sure what happened to the S, but it is revenues. Couple of slides at that, that's okay. Translation into Google sometimes. So state aids, this is really then, what these slides reflect is what's currently in our revised budget then that we're bringing forth tonight. The basic formula, which again is largely enrollment-driven, we get seven thousand two-hundred-eighty-one per pupil in twenty-four, twenty-five. And again, that's a one forty, of our three hundred and forty million, a hundred and forty-six of that is on this, this basic formula. Special education is our other most significant state aid. And right now we're projecting about $60 million received in aid, which is a significant increase. And then other thirty-three million. And that other state aid is compensatory, staff development, ATPPS. There is some REDACT funding in there, achievement integration. So there's a just plethora of other operating capital state aids in that dollar amount. Federal aids, I know it's been kind of a hot topic as to get asked probably once a week, hey, what's going to happen if? And so right now, in our revised budget, we're, I would say our federal aids have stayed very stable. Outside of you take out the pandemic-related funds that we received, we've really not seen a significant increase or decrease in quite a number of years outside of those. So special education reflected about four-point-one million. Our title programs, about a million dollars in our revised budget. And then other about a hundred thousand. And that's largely Perkins and American Indian Education Aid. Again, with the funny S, but our local and other revenues in the revised budget are levy. So that's the other significant part. We know we have a tremendous support in our community for our schools. Eighty-eight-point-three million is our total levy in the general fund. So I should have also said these are all reflective of general fund dollars. I know in the other attachment to the board was included all other funds as well. Interest, we are, I know I talked about it a while ago and we, first we thought maybe we'd have to decrease it a little. And then as we looked at historical and really just some uncertainty as well, but we were, had realized that we budgeted fairly low on interest and so we raised that slightly. So there's two-point-six million in general fund revenue. Third-party billing is $2 million. And I'll, one thing I'll point out with that is that is federal money that flows through us to Department of Health and Human Services via Medicaid. So when there is discussion about that, that would, you know, we could potentially see an impact on that as we look to future years anyway. Our revised budget, we should be okay. Other local and other revenues is kind of the other category that includes participation fees, admissions, donations and the like. We have about three-point-four million dollars. So this chart is just a kind of, we always like to provide a couple of graphics as well and not just talk to all the numbers, but this again, just lays out those dollars, just a real summary of the revenue itself. And again, about that four percent increase in total revenue. You'll see that slight decrease in federal aids. And again, that's just reflective of, as we get final numbers, that we can reflect that in there as well. That state aids is largely enrollment-driven, we'll talk about that. And again, we tried to revise to get a more accurate representation based on what we know today. So here's kind of the two meat and potatoes slides. I have one for revenues and one for expenditures on kind of the why. So what changed from original budget? Revenues, we know increased right now. We're projecting twelve-point-eight million from original budget. It seems like a really significant number, but where those two, the two primary drivers of that were state special education aid of eight-point-one million dollars. That really was for two reasons. One, our expenditures, when we finalized twenty-four, came in higher, right? Than we had set original budget kind of on. And so once the state calculates the state aid based on expenditures from that previous year, so finalized twenty-four will drive our twenty-five revenue as they finalized those. The other thing we did last year for the first time was we shifted to using our federal funds, our federal special education funds for tuition billing. So through the state, what happens if our students are serviced at another district, we're billed back for ninety percent of that cost. Similarly, we can bill out for those we serve. But as we tend to, for example, nine-sixteen, when we send students for special education services, that's tuition billed via the state system. Typically that just reduces our state aid. By leveraging the federal funds for that, not only do we decrease that, there's the reduction that we're receiving for that tuition bill, it also then generates state aid. So it's kind of a multiplier effect on that shift. Other state aids increased four-point-two and the largest driver again was enrollment, which is why we always speak to enrollment and that four-hundred-and-fifteen students higher in our revised budget than our original projection. Primarily those were in grades K. We saw higher than anticipated and we know we try to be conservative because it's always that uncertainty. Also, we've seen more tenth and twelfth graders currently. So I'm just kind of interesting to see where they landed. And there was a variety of mixes, but those are the three primary grades that we saw the largest number of student increases. And then local revenues has increased by five-hundred-and-sixty thousand. And again, interest and other were the two main categories in there. When we flip to expenditures then, so this shows by type. This is really by category of kind of what do we spend it on? So it's salaries, benefits, services, supplies, capital and other. Salaries and benefits, again, we always speak that it's between that seventy-five and eighty percent of our budget and that's reflective here as well. Marginal changes, but again, when we have a budget our size, one percent is often a very large number. So when we do look at that, it can be significant. The change here just reflects from revised to original. So remaining quite stable on salaries. And those two then for services and capital, like I said, the next slide I'll talk about, or the slide after maybe, we'll talk about exactly what happened there. But I will just say that we really align to our capital, long-term facility maintenance. And we used to code it, for example, when we had Colma do architect services, we used to code that to a service category in the three hundreds and now we're coding it more to project cost to the five-hundred series. So we just feel that better lines long-term because we used to capture all of that anyway. So we always like to talk about by program as well. So we do a lot of talking about salaries and benefits, making the significance of our budget, but also where do we spend the dollars? And so this is by kind of function. So whether it's administration, district support, regular instruction, our classroom teachers, vocational instruction, so when we have CTE expenditures, special instruction. So whether it's the transition programming or other special education programming for students that need those services. Community service is really our voluntary pre-K programming that's in general fund. Instructional support, which consists of assistant principals, it is our media specialists and then it's a lot of district support, TLS and P are para staff. Pupil support is our counselors, our social workers, our transportation is all in that category. Sites and buildings, our facilities, whether it's lights and snow removal, which is kind of the hot topic yesterday. And any of our, just all of those related costs, so our custodial staff as well. And then other is our, like workers' comp insurance, as long as severance costs are also in that category on this particular slide. So no significant changes other than instructional support went up some. And that's largely impact the REDACT-related stipends that we hadn't budgeted for in that category. And guidance came out from the state that said, hey, this is where that should be budgeted. So we added that into the. I like to say our world famous dollar bill, but maybe our community famous dollar bill. But this is really just trying to illustrate again where we spend our money. And so when we add up classroom instruction, special education, student support, those three that really are just driven by students, it's about seventy-six, just slightly over seventy-six cents on the dollar that we spend on our direct to students. And we're always try to keep that as close to our students, our spending as we can. And so I'm always thankful for that. Administration consists not only of, you know, the board truly as well as our principals at our sites. So just note that that three-point-four percent does also include that. As I said, instructional support is APs, media, TLS and para, facilities at eleven-and-a-half percent, so both of those. And then district support, which includes myself and my payroll and includes HR and it also includes IT. So any of the device, a lot of our devices and things like that are in that three-point-four percent number. So when you think of what all is in there, sometimes I'm always kind of proud it's not just people that are in there either. So the why, what did expenditures, why the increase from original budget? In total, it was six-point-seven million dollar increase. Salaries were one-point-eight million dollars of that. Largely it was REDACT stipends, about a million dollars with salaries and benefits both kind of in there. So largely salaries. Labor settlements, we know like this is the year longevity for teachers started on July first. And so at the time we had kind of estimated what we thought and then we have actual numbers. And then actual salaries for hires. When we originally do the budget, we have open positions. We know that we, for whatever reason, right? We have people perhaps that leave or retire and we have open positions. And so this now, when we update for revised budget can reflect actual salaries for those that were hired into those positions. Again, just that bullet on the shift from services to capital to align those project expenditures. And that was about eleven-point-two million. And so that's just a shift. It's not in that six-point-seven, but just so you knew where that, why the big changes in those categories. Services outside of that increased about one-point-four million and there was offsets to it as well. So substitute teachers, we went up $500,000 from original budget. Special education services, so we have contract nervous services, either with like, we do pay for some nine-sixteen services outside of the tuition billing. It could also be contracted nurses or related services. So whether it's OT, PT, speech language perhaps, those were up about four-hundred-thousand. And transportation, so our contracted transportation, which is always kind of a nebulous number a little bit for us to try to, but increased one-point-four million. So if I add those up, you might say, well, hey, Chris, that's not one-point-four million when that went up. But again, we were offset by some reductions as well. Utilities came in a little bit better, at least projected to be better. So we'll see if that holds. And again, we hope there's no snow. We did take a hundred thousand dollars off snow. But like I said, what we know today, and we were a little bit high in those areas. Supplies increased two-point-two million and capital increased seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand and that's largely with carryover. In the audit, when we do that each year, at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, there is actually a committed fund balance for carryover and that was two-point-two million dollars. So just know that it is associated with that number. They may or may not spend all of that, but we certainly do try to budget for that. And we try to, you know, make some assumptions about that as well. Capital carryover was four-hundred-and-twenty of that amount and then just a little other. Our unassigned fund balance, so this reflects the board policy calculation, which aligns to MDE's statutory operating debt calc. So it's just a little bit different than some other districts may use. But we are projecting at the end of this year to still decline. And so you may say, well, Chris, we have a million dollar to the good. Why are we declining still? And really it comes that expenditure numbers, if we go back a couple of slides, is really increasing faster than our fund balance. So we're increasing expenditures more significantly in that one million. So as a percentage thereof. And so it will reduce, I'm anticipating to reduce our fund balance to fifteen-point-eight percent at this point. And again, as we start projecting for next year, it's always challenging when those expenditures are going faster than our, keeping up with our fund balance. So next steps. So the board will ask for approval at the next, at the business meeting in March on the twenty-seventh for the revised budget. Staffing allocations to principals for next year for twenty-five, twenty-six have already, kind of we're in the process. So I'll look at Abby too. I know they've been having a lot of staffing meetings. We had a elementary and secondary recap in the past couple of weeks for licensed staff and then again, non-licensed allocations as well. So that's kind of a continuing process for a bit yet, kind of through the end of March. Twenty-five, twenty-six revenues right now are projected that will do that as we start to look towards the original budget. We do, I have positive news is that the state formula, the MDE did release that it will be set at two-point-seven-four for next year. So the nice part with that is that- So the nice part with that is it helps us, now we know what that number is, that we don't have to just make some best guesses on that number, especially with the amount of revenue it drives. Finance staff, so my team will work very hard to compile all of the '25, '26 expenditures, and that work has already started. And it might seem a little early, but it takes us some time between all the staffing nuances to it, as well as just to make sure that we're identifying any other changes and aligning things. '25, '26 budget will, the first presentation will be presented at workshop on June 6th, then we'll ask for approval at the business meeting on June 20th, and then we'll start audit for this current year of '24, '25 in July. And so I always tell people, when we have really two seasons in finance world, and it's budget not it, and this largely reflects why. So with that, any questions?
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Simi.
So you mentioned that our, our revenues increased because of state special education aid, but this is not an improvement in the cross-subsidy?
No. So I would say that our original budget, and special aid is somewhat challenging, too, until we get everything reconciled, right? And I would say we had a new person on our team this year as well, Mary Beth Collins, who joined us, part graduate. So it's been really fun to have her, but she started and was like, hey, let's reconcile. We call it CEDRA. It's the state, we have to basically retake all of our special education and put it into that system. And so by the time we updated all of that, really tried hard to make sure that everything that we could possibly reflect in there was appropriate and included. And really, I would say maybe a little more deeper into some of that, really to say, hey, is there a long-term sub that has a license? Could we put that in there? Really tried to look at that. And so we ended up just having greater costs at the end. And so again, teacher settlement, right, when we perhaps set, even when we would have done revised budget, it would have been, we might not have quite captured all the revenue that maybe that was going to generate. And that change in federal tuition really helped us as well. So I will, we know right now the state is prorating special education, so to be still conservative, we are actually reflecting the 95% from the state. But yeah, it really, the expenditures of the previous year always drive. And I would say we under-budgeted revenue, probably originally some. But again, in our conservative measure, sometimes it gets a little challenging. We always want to be cautious of that.
So can you explain to me then, I think I'm having trouble understanding exactly what it is that the federal funds allow us to do? And then also, so this is a two-part question. And then also, are those federal funds at risk for future years?
Yeah. So I would say perhaps to the second question. And I said what will happen then is we'll, once again, utilize those as state expenditures instead, and the tuition bill will be adjusted out of our aid. So what happens when you shift to using federal funds, and I kind of want to vanna white here, but the, I'm going to use real just big numbers, right? So if we had, they call it kind of the base aid when they do the calculation, right, just based off our expenditures, and if we have 47 million, I'll say, in base aid, they would take off $3 million or $4 million for our tuition bill. So typically, it's in the neighborhood of four, four and a half in recent years. They would just reduce that right away, just off the top. So there's your 47 million minus, you know, $4 million, and you get 43 million. So that's our new base. And then they calculate from there, they go to the cross-subsidy aid and excess cost aid. So as they look at that, right, that 4 million comes right off that. So it doesn't get calculated on the excess cost aid either. The cross-subsidy aid. Yep. And so when that, by shifting that, we take that, we actually move those expenditures back into the state aid formula, because we used to subs, we used to take benefits, so state aid, state-eligible expenditures, and move it over against our federal funds to fully spend them. By doing it on this side, it increases our expenditures, because we're no longer removing those $3 million in expenditures. And then it also increases or reduces that number that they're subtracting. So we're increasing this when they calculate the aid, and then we're reducing the amount that they're taking off of our aid.
Okay. So then the cross-subsidy also is then based on the bigger expenditure number?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And so is this something that, I mean, it seems like, it seems like it's an accounting shift that also is a little, like, there's not a downside to it?
I would say that's true. And so what happened is in, a number of years ago, we used to always have the cap. And so when, in times of the cap, it wouldn't have mattered, because they capped our growth and our expenditures. When they eliminated the cap, and that's where our, I will give credit where credit is due, and our auditor, Erin Nielsen, had said, hey, we're seeing a lot of people. And so at that point, we reached out to the state and said, hey, Paul Farin, who's the supervisor at the State for Special Education, he said, yeah, we're seeing a lot more districts do it with the elimination of the cap. Previously, it wouldn't have been to our benefit, because it wouldn't have increased that expenditures that the aid was based off of. And so we quickly said, well, let's take a look at that, and why wouldn't we leverage that? And so again, we'll get that first-year benefit, and we'll have some marginal benefit thereafter, but it's really that first year that you see the most significant benefit.
So then, because this was the first year, then we got this big chunk of $8 million, and then in the out-years, it'll be?
Marginal thereafter.
You know, more rounding error kind of stuff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will move on to 5.3, and that is the first reading of proposed policy changes, and that will be presented by Julie Nielsen, Superintendent.
Thank you, Katie. This evening, I am bringing the following policies forward that have been reviewed to reflect updates in Minnesota statute, the definitions, terms, legal references, and/or cross-references. Our Board Policy Committee did take the time prior to the meeting to review the policies and make any recommendations. This evening, the 400-series policies included with staff. Number 400 policy incorporates all the references. 401, equal employment opportunity. 402 is our nondiscrimination disability, and there were no proposed changes there. 402.2 is our nondiscrimination section 504, no proposed changes. 403, discipline, suspension, and dismissal of school district employees, no proposed changes there. 418, drug-free and workplace drug-free schools, no proposed changes. 419, tobacco-free environment, no proposed changes. 522, Title IX sex discrimination. We are recommending going back to, to revise it to reflect the October 2024 version. And then finally, 524, student technology and acceptable use and safety. We added a section on cell phones, cellphone use, and removed the belief statement so that we remain consistent with our other policies. So with that, this evening, I am asking for, excuse me, I am not asking for approval. I am asking the board chair to ask if there's any comments.
Are there any comments related to any of the policies?
I have one on 524. So just for the cellphone portion, is that policy going to be authored by the school board for how we're going to, say, monitor the cellphone use? Or is that something that's specific to the administration?
That would be specific to the administration. So currently, at our elementary schools, there are no cellphones, middle school away for the day, and then high schools away during class periods. So that would be more of a management versus in policy language.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we do take public comment.
Wait, sorry, I did have a question on the cellphone policy. I was, I had asked you, Julie, and I don't know if you were able to get any, do we have, like anecdotal data on how the, how the new policy is, is playing out at our schools?
We sure do. Thank you, Kelly and Christine. Here we go. When we look at the middle level, student, our positive impact on student behavior and well-being, a decrease in distractions and dysregulation. I noticed like the first week, enhanced social interactions, like anywhere you went, there was just more talking going on. Reduced social media conflict and improved overall classroom engagement. And that is where some of that social comes in, is that kids are actually talking and working together. At the middle level, strong community and parental support. Overall, high parent satisfaction. We would say minimal pushback. I think that initially, there were some concerns, and we know that sometimes our parents have had a communication sequence where they would just text or call, maybe not knowing what class students were in. Our middle schools have also noticed a reduced Monday morning issue problem. So sometimes when the weekend comes into school on Monday, it's a lot of firefighting on Monday on situations that happen throughout the weekend. So they have seen a reduction in that. Middle school, increased teacher satisfaction, a real positive school energy, and reducing the number of physical conflicts and just students recording things in the hallways that might be inappropriate. And so not having cellphones out has helped that at the middle level. At the high school level, increased student attention and participation, opportunities to collaborate and interact, and that was very noticeable. Positive impact on our student leaders. Other things related to student well-being and social dynamics at the high school, reduced social media issues, and an improved sense of well-being, decreased phone-related discipline, and increased overall referrals and for use of phones. So that has been a positive thing as well. I think that it just brought a different life back to our classrooms. You know, many times when the teacher got done with a focus lesson, students would turn to their cellphone. And I think even students reporting that they're getting more work done, they have less homework. And then I would say, for me, the happiest thing is watching kids interact around assignments and work and projects.
So public comment is allowed after our first reading of the policies. It is related only to the policies that are on the agenda this evening. We do allow up to three minutes per individual. You can't merge your speaking time with anybody else, so if you only take two minutes, you can't give it to the next person. Individuals presenting to the school board must identify themselves or a group if you are representing a group. Comments, present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. Any vulgarity, character abuse, or specific complaints identifying staff, students, or task force members will not be permitted. Electronic presentations will also not be permitted. I will provide the speaker, or somebody, Sean will provide the speaker with a visual 30-second reminder. And then again, when 10 seconds is remaining, at the three-minute mark, the microphone will be muted, and the speaker's time will end. We will, the school board will not respond to or discuss any comments. The superintendent may be asked to prepare a future response to the specific questions. The board chair, myself, will terminate the remarks of any individual that does not adhere to the established guidelines. Again, these policies, or these comments are strictly to the policies that we are speaking or that are on the agenda tonight. When I call your name, please come up, and then make sure you name the policy that you are speaking on this evening. I do apologize, I am not great at reading some handwriting, so I may just use initials. So if you signed up and I state your initials, please come forward and state your name. It looks like we have Pat S. as our first speaker. Okay. Then we have Brooke E.
I will pass.
You will pass. Emily B. H. You will pass. Ryan M. Okay. M. D. Anything? Molly? Mike? Daniels?
Donnelly?
Donnelly? Oh, you'll pass? Okay. I am very sorry, I, I am not a doctor, I can't read this writing. I do apologize. And then I, Carol Lou? You pass as well? Okay. I do very much apologize if I butchered anybody's names. I, I will do better next time. Okay. So with everybody passing this evening, we will move on to 6.0, reports and comments. Julie Nielsen, Superintendent.
Fabulous, thank you. I was sharing with Chair Schwartz that I served at the National Weather Service this Tuesday. I left my driveway, I backed out, and I got stuck. And then I popped it into four-wheel drive, and I was well on my way. And as I was fumbling at 3:50 in the morning to try to get the webinar up for the National Weather Service, I realized I needed to keep both hands on the wheel. And so I decided, I don't need to listen to a webinar, I'm out and driving in this thing. And it was very clear from back, you got in my driveway, that it was going to be a no-go. My favorite part of the day, of course, seeing students out playing in the snow, but Kyle Uker, our Director of Facilities, we spent a good 10 minutes watching the big bobcat out here move the snow and watching their wheels spin because the snow was so heavy. So it was, what is that place called with the big diggers you can watch like a playground? It's not just entertaining for small children. We enjoyed it. I wanted to just do a quick highlight and a shout-out, something that's in our family news, and that is our food rescue program. If you take a look at that, the one that just went out tonight from our Communications Department, our school district has already donated over 10,000 pounds of food to basic needs. And so what a wonderful way, when students aren't going to eat the craisins, the oranges, the apples, to donate those back to individuals who really need food. And so thank you to the, to our nutrition services program that is leading that food rescue program up. Second, a reminder that transportation opt-in. We're hoping to have that all closed down by Friday, March 7th. So please, anyone that has not gone in and done that, please make sure you do that. When we return from spring break, we will be into testing season. Our MCA and MTOS testing will begin. And then finally, just a reminder that spring break will be the 10th through the 14th next week, and then 17th, the Monday, Katie's birthday, will also be a workday for staff. And we hope that our staff and students, even though we had a couple extra days break with snow and weather, enjoy a nice spring break in a little bit different pace. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Do any board members have any comments related to any upcoming events for their policy or committees?
Yes. I have one from the DEI committee. The Woodbury Racial Equity Collaborative is having a speaker series, and the speaker is coming Wednesday, March 19th at 5:00 PM at Woodwinds Hospital. His name is Dr. Yuhuru, Yuhuru Williams. I hope I pronounced that appropriately. And, but one of the things he'll be talking about is things like achievement gaps in education. So it may be good for us to attend.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, on to 7.0, and that is our future meeting dates. Our next board meeting is at the end of March, so March 27, 2025, and that is a school board business meeting here at the District Service Center at 6:00 PM. And then April 10th, another, or a school board workshop meeting, also here at the District Service Center at 6:00 PM. And with that, 8.0, and we are adjourned.